Serving Amherst and Amherst Township, your hometown television station. Amherst City Cable.
I'd like to call the meeting to order of utilities at 7:03. In attendance to roll call, Councilman Goodell here, Councilman Boukavak here, Councilman Van Scherren here, Councilman Janet here, Councilman Winarsky here, and President Dietrich is here. Mr. Winarsky?
I'd like to ask that we excuse Councilwoman Will Silk, she has a letter on file.
You have a second?
Yes, second.
Councilman Goodell. All right, we're here to discuss agenda number...
Is there a vote on that motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you vote? Move to accept the letter on file?
Yeah, there's a pending motion to do that.
All those in favor of accepting the letter on file for Ms. Will Silk?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. We have, thank you.
You're welcome.
We have A-15-15, subject to authorization to enter into agreement with Fiber Tech for pole attachments of aerial cables, antennas, transceivers, amplifiers, equipment, wires, and associated hardware. This was tabled at our last meeting. During that time, we were asked to call in somebody from Fiber Tech to discuss a little bit more and answer questions. Safety Service Director Costello went ahead and made that call, arranged it, and now, if you'd like, Mr. Costello, I'm gonna hand this over to you to kind of intro our guests, if you would?
That's fine, thank you. Tim from Fiber Tech is here to answer your questions. So I'll probably tell him if you come up. Just say who you are and what company you're from.
Is everybody in council? My name's Tim Schultz, I'm from Fiber Tech Communications or Technologies, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have on the agreement for us to attach to the city meeting poles.
Councilman Winarsky?
That's Tim Schultz?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you just give us an overview of the work planned and the purpose of it? What the end purpose of it will be? What will serve, what will provide?
Well, basically, this agreement was, I believe, just for 30-foot poles, and it was from one of our customer sites to another customer site, running through the city of Amherst, attaching to all city meeting poles.
What is being put on those poles, please?
Just fiber optic cable.
No supporting apparatus or equipment or anything?
There were strands, through bolts or a clamp that would hold that strand, fiber optic cable, which was done last to the strand.
Okay. We had Fiber Tech up here before, and we were explaining, it was explained to us that there'd be fibers run, and we left here with the impression that it would be just fibers run. Next meeting, we found out that there was actual equipment going on the top of the poles. Will that, will this work resemble that, or will that, this work support future expansion onto the top of the poles?
Negative. This, this work is standalone work only, from one customer location to another customer location, interconnecting those two locations. There's no planned equipment, no planned new poles, nothing, no new, no new attachments, just the fiber optic being attached to the existing poles.
Okay. From one equipment or one customer to another, is that from a cell tower to a cell tower? Is that midso to midso? What is the, to and from, please?
I'm not privy to, that wasn't my, I didn't exactly build this job, I just kind of got thrown into it as far as helping assist the attachment to the pole attachments. I, I do believe it may be associated with that type, but I cannot tell you for sure. I know, you know, it runs from one of our customers to the other, and it's basically just in there to connect for those.
Okay. How many strands of fiber, please?
Twenty-four.
Okay. Single mode?
All single mode, yes.
Okay. Will any of that other fiber is the, will be leased out, or is it used for your customer only?
Right now, it is not. Right now, it's our customer only.
Okay. So that, I mean, a fiber has no theoretical limit to the amount of information it can carry, it's only limited by the equipment on both ends, if I'm not mistaken?
Correct.
Which leads me to believe with the additional fibers, there's expansion planned beyond just the, the purpose of hanging it. When we left council before, as I mentioned, we came back and learned that there's additional work added. I guess my question is, what I see, or what I think I see in the future, is that this will be used for some kind of maybe a DAS system, microcell. While I have no objections to that, if you're doing business in Amherst, I think it's only a fair thing that we have some kind of assurance that we're working together. We currently have a cable contract where they give us a percentage, or a dollar amount. And I'd just like to know what the position is of your customer with regards to any expansion beyond just simple running of fibers that would support a DAS system or microcell or any other, maybe a citywide Wi-Fi system? What their position would be with regards to revenue sharing?
Potentially, you are absolutely correct. That could be expanded, and it could be used for other information sources like that, but as it sits right now, I'm not aware of any other expansion off of that existing charter that's been placed. You are both correct, you're very informed, that's exactly what it could be used for, and, but I'm not aware of any current plans to do so with that fiber.
Okay.
And I'm sure if something down the road were to happen, we've been very open with the city, and you guys have been awesome to work with, and we'd like to work with you in the future, so if that were any plans that the city may have, I'm sure we could accommodate it.
Okay. With that, I'd like to ask the Law Director and Safety Service Director and anyone else in the administration, ask what protections do we have built in? What language is in here that would afford us the opportunity to modify this contract that would benefit us, working with the end customer here? How, first of all, how do we become aware that the expansion's occurring? And then, what, what do we have that will put us in a position for revenue sharing, or any kind of subscriber fees?
Yeah, we did add a section on page 12, starting on line 11, says nothing in this agreement prevents either party during its term and its future agreements from seeking and agreeing to franchise agreements between the licensee and the municipality for present or future services. So there's really nothing in there that tells us how we're gonna catch them, but it does say, "This contract won't prevent us from pursuing that." For some of these contracts, I think do actually prevent you from suing that.
Well, and...
Pursuing.
Right. And Mr. Winarsky, I appreciate your questions because it led me to understand what exactly Fiber Tech is seeking to put on poles, and what they're indicating now, at least percent of this contract, is that they're putting 24-strand fiber only, obviously with guide wires, whatever else you need to actually attach those, the fiber optic lines. No additional apparatus is gonna be indicated in the contract. Clearly, last time we were here, we weren't aware that they were gonna attach any cell towers, or, I'm not sure if that's the correct phrase, but apparatus beyond the fiber strands. So what I was suggesting to council and to the Safety Service Director and the administration is that we slightly modify the agreement to reflect that, what's in the exhibits, and what is actually being attached to our poles, which is the 24-strands of fiber, fiber carried. Now, this contract allows the Safety Service Director to enter into further agreements, perhaps if Fiber Tech, and they've been good, they've been responsive to our inquiries if they wanted something else, additional attachments, different types of beyond-fiber optics, then perhaps then they just contact us and we do this again. And then, we ask the same questions about what we're putting on in the future, and I think we should be satisfied with that plan. But I appreciate your questions because it's led me, it's starting to click in my mind as to what I need to change in this, this grant.
Okay. Once again, my concern... It's not even a concern, because you guys, you know, you're good. When I talk to people, they see you out working, you treat everyone well, you're not one of those obnoxious contractors that comes into town, and I'm very grateful for that. My concern is that I just, you know, we'd be partners like we have with our cable company here. If there's an expansion that generates or puts offer services beyond what exists right now, and if we take a snapshot for you to go to your customer's website and look at the rate plans that are available and the services that are provided, if this creates additional services that don't exist now, I would like to see us enter into some kind of revenue share, once again, subscriber fee. And I'd just like to know, if, say, I get voted out, everyone gets voted out, or whatever, what do we know? What can be done to make sure that we do enter into agreement that, you know, creates a situation where we're sharing revenue?
Well, that would, I'm not a lawyer, and I can't tell you the specifics on it. Fiber Tech has reviewed the agreement, they do, they concur with all your, everything that you're looking for in it. I do must tell you that, I worked for the cable company for over 20 years, and there is no local, although they're honoring your local franchise, there is not a local franchise anymore, it's a statewide franchise due to the AT&amp;T U-verse. This was a few years ago, and it was part of the statewide ballot, and the time owner of your local cable company will honor that until another cable company, wow, comes into your area. We're not a cable company, we are just a fiber optic company. So, it's similar, but very different. Excuse me.
Okay. Mr. Law Director, just wondering, what is our, what I'm concerned about, we have companies doing business in our city. If they're doing business, what are our options? And when I say doing business, if they're expanding services beyond what exists right now, using this?
Well, I think the status of whether or not we could seek franchise agreements for this type of service, or services that Fiber Tech should be providing, is up to the air, it's being litigated in the state of Ohio as it is. I'm not sure if city of Amherst necessarily wants to engage in litigation, or simply let other municipalities pare it out and see how the courts rule on that. We have parts, a section of this agreement which allows us, if the courts ultimately rule that revenue sharing is permissible, or franchise agreements are permissible for this type of communications, then we could certainly address it with Fiber Tech at that point, and if things enter negotiations, this agreement can be terminated by either party. It's not an indefinite contract. We certainly can terminate it if we felt we were being treated unfairly pursuant to the case law that's gonna be made in the future. But I imagine that if the courts of appeals, or the trial courts, if they decide that we can have some sort of revenue sharing, or that we can have some sort of franchise agreements, I imagine that it's in the interest of whatever company wants to come to Amherst to entertain our inquiries, entertain our proposals. So, right now, I don't think we're in a position to necessarily interfere with the quote of federal regulations, which prevent us from interfering with, you know, cable companies, or, sorry, communications companies coming in and providing services to our citizens. It's, it's being tested right now by other municipalities.
Okay. All right. Well, I've expressed my concerns and what I'd like to see happen in the future, and once again, thank you for coming up, and I'm done with questions.
All right, thank you, Councilman Winarsky. Mr. Costello?
To answer a little bit further, Mr. Winarsky, this contract's somewhat written to allow Fiber Tech to hang on any pole that the city owns throughout the entire city, as long as the individual project is agreed to by the Safety Service Director, am I correct? The way it's written now...
Well, the way it's worded now is correct, however, having heard the presentation from Fiber Tech, I would have recommendations to the contract.
So what I would just suggest, if you wanted to tighten that up a little bit more, you could remove some of the wording, because this contract somewhat allows antennas, you could remove some of those words, keep it specific to fiber optics, and you might want to keep it specific to this particular project, would give you a little bit more control when, when they want to come back in and do more things. So that would be my suggestion, if that's, you want more control.
I would add one other thing, Mr. Miller. I would also like to add that it all has to have council approval. I don't think the Safety Service Director should have the authority to do this without council approval. So anything that we have on that thing, it should be, need council approval.
I agree with the mayor on that, council should be...
Mr. Carlson, would you be able to make those amendments that we can move this to the floor, down the road, or would you like to? Mr. Pacora?
Well, I'll be, I'll be, I'm handling this contract, so I'll be, I'll do it on behalf of the city. But, the question has been posed by the Safety Service Director and the mayor. We've been honoring it, there's pros and cons to it, but after hearing the presentation, I think we all agree that this contract should be quite specific to what's being requested by Fiber Tech, and should they request something else, or want to add additional purposes or equipment on their poles, they can come to us. We've had a good working relationship with them, and it's moved from there. But I think we need to narrow down the scope of this contract, and indicate that it's going to be specific to the items being requested by Fiber Tech, and not make it so broad, so...
Just to clarify that as well, you're looking to also have it under council approval, correct? Not Safety Service Director approval?
You're asking, well, right now, as it's worded, basically, you're allowing the Safety Service Director to perpetually enter into agreements and sub agreements with Fiber Tech as they come through the pike. So, basically, in two months, if Fiber Tech wanted to put on some mini cell towers, or whatever, you know, different types of technology on the poles, the way it's worded now, all you have to do is go to the Safety Service Director. Having heard Mr. Winarsky's questions and concerns and comments, and actually hearing what Fiber Tech really wants to put on the poles, I think we can narrow it down, make it simple, and grant their request. I think you're authorizing us, the administration and the city, to do that with assistance to the next reading, to the first reading of council. But prospectively, should Fiber Tech want some other attachments to our poles, so have to come back and request, make those requests. So, entering the discussion now, you're authorizing the Safety Service Director to have a pared-down contract, and we'll just go from there. We don't need to come back to council for, to approve it again. So, does that make sense?
Yes, and we're just, are we looking for a future council agreement?
Future council agreement would be, would be necessary, just like they're coming back now. They came back, they came to us in the fall, and then they came to us again, and we said, you know what, we want to make sure we understand what's being put on the poles, and we'd like to enter into another agreement for this project. And I need to just narrow it on the contract a little further, to make sure this pertains to exactly what they want. They, on the record, have indicated that they want to put strands of fiber only, and then obviously the guide wires and whatever you need to actually attach it to their poles, nothing else. Should in the future Fiber Tech need something else to put on our poles, this contract's gonna indicate they're gonna have to come to us again and go through the same process with council, and then they go from there. All of our contracts, your approval is the Safety Service Director to enter into contracts, it's the same thing.
And Councilman Boukavak, you got a question?
Thank you. Just a couple quick, thank you, Mr. Schultz, for coming down.
Yes, sir.
I had to look real quickly on some mapping and stuff. The 45700 address is a cell tower, I see. I'm just curious, where was it terminating at the, at 58 Park Avenue? Are you terminating to another previous run fiber optics?
Basically, that was previously run, and that's when I was in here in, I believe, November, December, when we had that agreement. So basically, it was an extension of that existing, although two different entities.
Understood. So it's an extension of our, of our previous agreement? Excellent. Mr. Winarsky, I commend him for the great questions, and he answered a lot of the questions I had, or brought the similar questions up. What is our, I would like to make a motion and send this to the floor of council, but do I do that with the request of the changes that you had mentioned?
I was just saying, yes.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to send, give me a number.
A-15-15.
A-15-15 to the floor of council, with the understanding that there will be changes made to the contract that will specifically state the power of decision, the future contracts will be under council control for this contract, or not, or taken away from the...
You don't need to do that. It's just gonna say that this contract simply will be to approve the, again, you'll have to verify the number of strands you're, we're gonna put on.
Number poles.
Yeah, because every contract you guys, the council approves, you're approving the Safety Service Director to enter into.
But my understanding is, the current way it's written is that...
I'm gonna change it.
And I'm suggesting that we change that part.
Right, it's kind of perpetual, they just go to the Safety Service Director and he approves whatever they want.
That's the way I was trying to work.
Exactly.
And also the addition of the exact number of poles, and that it's fiber and only connection of fiber to the poles only.
Correct. In fact, if I could get from Fiber Tech an actual exhibit to attach to this, is to know exactly what you were asking for as far as the items itself.
You mean, strands, strand crimps?
Yeah.
Bolts, through bolts?
Right.
Attachments, that kind of thing?
Exactly.
I do not have the information with me, but I can easily produce that.
Sure.
And you can, you know, and there are different situations, whether you're in the middle of a run, or at the end of a run, as far as down guides and just equipment, so I would have to include those other examples, but basically, that's exactly it, fiber optic cable, strand, and if others still hold it.
Exactly.
Because I think that's important, because our last agreement was brought to council, what we thought we were voting on wasn't initially, or was not what ended up in the agreement, so we were trying to prevent that, so...
Exactly.
Thank you.
Good points.
So, we have a motion for a more narrowly defined and edited contract that will be brought to the floor of council, and we have a second, Mr. Goodell?
Yes, second.
We have a second, Mr. Goodell. And with that, that's also, you're gonna see a building materials list probably presented, and we know that that's an estimated based on the number of poles you're... So if you could provide a building materials list, basically?
Would you need a full building materials list?
What would you like, Law Director?
No. I was recommending just a whole mock of your attachments, what the heights would be, and potentially, if there were a tee pole or an ending pole, how that would be printed up, and really, that's...
That would be, that might be what you need.
Right, I think that's appropriate, if you could, maybe after being talked to me if this is...
Okay, yes, I'll, I'll definitely look at that one.
Okay, great.
So before we go to vote with this, I'd like to make sure there's no further questions or comments, either by council or administration, regarding this topic. Mr. Schultz, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, sir, I don't, I'm here for any questions you may have.
Well, seeing that there's none, and I appreciate you coming up and speaking with us, and I know this is out of your way, so thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, we have a motion on the floor for A-15-15 to take the floor of council, authorization to enter into agreement with Fiber Tech for pole attachments of aerial cables, antennas, transceivers, amplifiers, equipment, wires, and associated hardware.
Just cable.
Which will be edited down to the exact requirements of what, maybe not a building materials list, but some form of mock-up showing that it's mostly aerial cables?
Correct.
And any associated hardware with running those 24-strand single mode fiber to 130 poles, is that correct?
Thirty-four poles.
Thirty-four poles? Good. Less than 134. Less inconvenience on the residents. Okay, with that being said, I'd like to go to vote. I'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Goodell?
Yes.
Mr. Boukavak?
Yes.
Mr. Van Scherren?
Yes.
Mr. Janet?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion passes. Six oh. Mr. Winarsky?
Was there anything else for the Utilities Commission, or Utilities Bureau?
That's all I have for, when it comes to utilities, so...
I'd like to ask for adjournment.
I'd love to entertain your motion to adjourn second. Hopefully, there, Mr. Boukavak?
I was second to their motion.
All those in favor of adjournance, aye?
Aye.
Post. Ayes have it. We're adjourned at 7:22.
I'm organizing. Now the custom scene? Now the custom scene? How's football registrations coming? They got offense, I end a defense. Ooh, big gamble. Take the upgrade.
I'd like to call the Streets Committee in session at 7:27. I have one item on the agenda today. Attendance is the same as the previous Utilities Committee, with everybody present except Councilwoman Will Silk. I have agenda item A-15-18, the authorization to enter into a contract with Perk Company, Inc., for the Safe Routes to School project with the emergency clause. Mr. Mayor, would you like to talk a little bit about this?
Yes, thank you. What I've submitted to you in your packet is a complete completion of our bid process for the Safe Routes to School. If you see my cover letter, you'll see that we rebid this thing, and this project, and then you go to the next bid, there's a letter from the engineers, which recommends Perk Company be awarded this project, an amount of $289,189.95. Now, this will be 100% paid by the state. There is no money coming out of the city's coffers for this project, in terms of this construction, and even though it is under local management, which is the city. And the Law Director, when we first got into this, has decided that, he feels that he recommends that we enter into the contract with the contractor, even though we're not paying any of the bills. So what will happen is, the bills will go, the contractor, who is Perk and Company, will get, will sign the contract with them, and then they'll get the job and do the job, and they'll invoice it, and they'll invoice it to the engineers, which is, having to say, Bramall Engineering. They'll approve the invoice, they'll send it to me, I'll approve it, then we'll send it to the state, and they will pay it. And this project has been a long time coming, and I'm asking for the emergency clause, so I can get on their construction list, and we can get the contract signed, and get the schedule, construction schedule started. And the schedule is, we'll start somewhere in the middle of May, I'm sorry, middle of June, or the end of June, and completion by October 31st. So answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Miller?
I'd just like to thank the administration for, like you said, a long time coming. I know we've had some city residents, administration, others working hard on this, Mr. Teller and a few others, and I think this is a fantastic opportunity to keep our neighborhoods connected with the school system. I thank you for all your efforts on this, and with that, I'd be glad to put a motion for A-15-18 to go to the floor of council with emergency.
Mr. Van Scherren?
Second.
I have a motion and a first, and a second? Motion and a first, that is general.
I touch right, Obi-Wan.
I have a motion, I think this is the floor of council, and a second, is there any more discussion or comment? I know in my discussions with the mayor, that there will be some interruption to traffic flow for a short period of time, that's undetermined yet, as they build the sidewalk close to the ravine there. And I think this is gonna be a nice project for the city, this is miles of camping ground, so... so, um, it's a good place to be, so. Uh, with that, uh, we'll, uh, I don't know, we'll call, in favor of taking this to the floor of council with emergency, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, passes six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Winarski?
Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Goodell?
Second.
I have a first and a second, through adjourn. All in favor, say aye by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned at 7:33.